Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, September 5th at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Council President, Amanda Baum.
Present.
President, Pro Tim Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Banks.
Present.
Councilmember Brightwell.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz. Councilmember Frazier.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
We have a call.
Can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First up is Communications. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impotent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Yolanda Haynes.
Thank you, Yolanda Haynes. Do I need to get my address?
No.
Okay, okay. I serve as president of the Friends of the Southfield Public Library, and I just wanted to make you aware of some of the things, the exciting things we have going on in this month of September. To start off, starting tomorrow, we're having our book sale at the Bookshelf. That's the Friends of the Library Bookshelf, which is inside the library. And the dates for the sale will go from tomorrow till Sunday, and Sunday is the bargain day where we will have everything at 50 percent off. Now, guys, we have some really, really nice books, and they're in great condition, excellent condition. So, just speaking on behalf to you, and also to let the public know, that this is a great way to get some nice, back to school, or back to fall, nice fall reads for yourself as well. All proceeds from the book sale, 100 percent of those proceeds go to support programming and funding at the library. And, on September 10th, which is this Sunday coming up, we will have our 20th anniversary celebration, and some of you were around for that celebration, and for the beginning of that, and I was celebrating 20 years being in that building. That is an architectural design award-winning building, and we're celebrating that it's still here, and we are having exciting things, starting at 1 o'clock, the library card design contest. We're having the Southfield AT&amp;T High School Marching Band. We'll have some remarks. We'll have a great band, a Dreams Deafert Band, and we'll have a Chamber Petting Zoo. Also, the Friends will be there with a table. For those of you that haven't taken advantage of the Friends' membership, and we have a table for you, where you can come by and find out what we do, and join. And I want to also thank all of the council members and city, city administrators, and all employees that did join the Friends, that took up the mayor's challenge, and joined Friends' sports membership. And for those of you that haven't, it's not too late to do so. Okay? And it's very nominal cost, and if you're a little bit up there, let's say over 50, you get a nice discount. I don't qualify for that. Just kidding. But anyway, the next thing, the next thing that we have is the Jazz and Blues at the library, September 20th. We're gonna be inside. I wish we could be outside, because it's still nice weather, but please come. It's women and jazz, it's gonna be really nice. Again, those proceeds go to support funding at the library, and most of the time when we do have those events, it's a minimal cost, you can pay online, and we support local artists, and most of the time the funds do not cover what the artists require, but we do still support the local artists and pay for that. So come out and tell your friends and family, and thank you for supporting the Friends of the Library. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening, Council. Good evening to all of the people that are in the auditorium. I just wanted to let the public know, and I'm sure they've already heard about it, because there's flyers everywhere, that we are having Part II of the Two Police Chiefs Town Hall Study Session. This time it's going to be in the city of Farmington Hills. It's going to be Thursday, September the 14th, from 5:30 to 8:30, because we know that September is National Suicide Awareness Month. And the question that we're asking the public is, what can we do next? How can law enforcement and the community come together to prevent suicide? So I'm hoping that all of the public will come and support Part II, just like you supported Part I in Southfield. We will be having Part III coming back to Southfield, a Part IV in Farmington Hills, and then a Part V, which would be a copulation of all of the data that we've collected and the suggestions from the public. Again, I want to thank the people that came, thank the people that came to the first one. We had over 400 people, and this is truly the people's forum. Mayor, you were not here, but the city did a great job. Mr. Zorn, the city did a great job in putting on this event. We had people from all over, the county, Genesee County, we had people from Wayne County, and what they basically said, which made me feel good as the event coordinator, working with both jurisdictions, that they've never been to a town hall study session, which in my mind is different than a town hall meeting. A town hall meeting is usually a lecture. Whoever is featured, and all you do is listen and maybe take notes if you want, but this time, the police chiefs, the city of Southfield, Farmington Hills, Detroit, Oak Park, we gave the people an option to speak. So we're going to do that this time. Again, I'm hoping that you come out to the Hawk Community Center. The address is 299-95 West 12 Mile Road. It's between Middle Belt and Orchard Lake. And for the people that are beyond Southfield and the surrounding community, the Hawk Community Center is the former Harrison High School, that big building that sits off from the streets. So come and support Chief Elvin Baron and Chief Jeff King from Southfield and Farmington Hills, and we would greatly appreciate it. And if you have any questions, you can call me, Pamela Gerald, but most of you know that my name is PG. My telephone number is 248-832-2799. That's the events line. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. That concludes Communications. Next, we have ordinances.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance number 1775, the rezoning from OS Office Service to B1 Neighborhood Business for the property located on the east side of Losa Road, south of 10 Mile Road.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to enact ordinance number 1775, a rezoning from OS Office Service to B1 Neighborhood Business Property, Neighborhood Business for the property located on the east side of Losa Road, south of 10 Mile. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have two items from planning. The first item is a presentation regarding a proposal to allow for an additional, for an addition of a carryout restaurant inside of an existing gas station.
Thank you, Council President. These items are for discussion. They'll come back on the 18th for vote. First up is a 20,000-020 West 8 Mile, an existing gas station at the corner of 8 Mile and Evergreen. B3 zoning. They are looking to add a carryout restaurant inside of the existing gas station convenience store. There is no expansion of the building or facade changes proposed. There are some minor site improvements that were added to the, at the request of the Planning Commission. You can see the site here. It will remain more or less configured as shown. Couple of photos of the site. The current zoning is B3 general business. Future land use is commercial office, which is, those are consistent. This is the site plan, the improvement. You'll note of the sidewalk from Evergreen to go toward the building now, and the bike racks along that walk. The area that's striped out in front of the building, between the pumps in the building, to try to discourage people from parking in that maneuver aisle. And then, a small key walk from the bus stop through the landscaping along 8 Mile there to stop people from trampling the landscaping if they need to go through there to get to the gas station. This is the landscape plan. Most of this is existing. There may be some things that need to be freshened up in there. That'll be part of our inspections prior to completion of the project. Floor plan, as you can see, the striped area on the far right is the area where the carryout's going. It's about 298 square feet. They'll be kind of reconfiguring the C-store to blow that in. Elevations, we have photos and drawings, but the elevations aren't really slated to change, so pretty much as you see them. That area off the top there is actually the property behind, looking toward the back of the building. And there's the front.
So basically, no changes in the building, but the inside will offer carryout?
That is, that is correct.
Essentially.
Yep. We do have the petitioner as architect here as well.
All right. So if you want to come up and give your name and address for the record, and add anything that you feel we should know.
Good evening. My name is Ken Moreland. I'm with Dorchen Martin &amp; Associates. We're the architects for Mr. Fouaz. 29895 Greenfield Road, Suite 107, here in Southfield. As Mr. Basin had said, we aren't changing anything. The configuration that you see in the floor plan, when we originally designed the building back, I think it was in 2001, Mr. Fouaz had the idea that he may someday want to, you know, incorporate a takeout sort of restaurant, deli counter. And so, basically, that has remained open and not utilized, and so now he has come back and would like to be granted the special use, which is required, along with the site plan. There are no changes to the exterior facade that's required, and I believe that the site improvements that we are providing, we meet the ordinance as far as the parking requirements and the connectors from both Evergreen and a small connector from where the bus stop is on 8 Mile, will be provided so that the public can access that as well, and not have to walk all the way around to Evergreen.
Okay.
With that, if you have any questions?
Councilman Hoag?
Yeah, just one or two questions, maybe. I'm sorry, what is the capacity for parking?
Right now, we call for, I believe there's 21 parking spaces, and an additional space that's, because we're providing the bike rack, so I believe it's 22 total, is what we have on-site.
Have you already selected the restaurant, or?
Yes, it meets the ordinance requirements.
No. Do you know what the name of the restaurant is going to be?
Oh.
Okay. I'm just wondering, that's a very busy corner there, and I just wanted to make sure that there's adequate parking, and just wondering about the traffic pattern right there, but, okay.
So, just to follow up on that question, your, do the parking spaces include the canopy where people fill up for gas?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And is it, is it going, you're not having an actual restaurant, you're just gonna have options for takeout?
Yes.
Like grab-and-go food?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Well, it's worded restaurant, but that's better for me. Okay. I mean, obviously, I knew you couldn't have a lot of seating, but I was just concerned as far as how much traffic it would bring, like if it was gonna be a subway or what have you, but.
Okay.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Councilwoman Frazier?
Yes. Have you either applied for, or are interested in selling beer and wine and liquor?
Wouldn't have a plan for that. Pardon? No, wouldn't have a plan for that. We can't hear you.
He said he does not have a plan for any liquor.
No plan for it?
No.
Okay. Is this the same gas station that when we did the island in the middle of?
Yep.
Evergreen, that we had to go back and change it?
Yes, exactly. Yeah, that's the one.
Okay. That's my question.
Went on that bus tour.
Pardon?
That's when we went on that bus tour, to look at that. All right. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I think my, most of my questions were answered, but I just want to confirm, you know, you've done a nice job renovating the gas station, so thank you, but you will not have tables inside the gas station for people to eat?
No.
Okay.
Just carryout.
And there was a lot of controversy when you were renovating your gas station, and we put that island on Evergreen Road to the plan, although I'm not sure if you're familiar. Do we know if there's been problems with people trying to take a shortcut and turn into the gas station, or, I don't know, maybe the owner would know?
It's, no, it's already removed, half of that.
It's what?
It's, half of that is already removed from Evergreen side.
They removed it?
Yeah.
Because the?
We did, because they said the local people were coming there and were having a hard time cutting across the road to get into the gas station.
Oh, I didn't even know.
That's why we shortened up the island.
Well, we shortened it up, but there's still a little island.
Yeah, there's a little island there.
There's a little island there, so I didn't know if it was still conflicting with the traffic pattern going into your property.
I don't think so. I mean, like, that's, that's an issue.
Yeah, it's, the island ends at the point where it lines up with the entrance of the driveway, if you look on aerial photo, so it wouldn't obstruct.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
The island ends where the driveway lines up, so it would not obstruct that side drive in any way.
Okay.
You can see it on aerial photo in its current configuration. It's a little faint because of the right-of-way layers on.
Okay. I guess I'll have to take a drive over there to see. And then, you said in the future, you are not considering selling liquor at this location.
Not, you know, down the road, you know, maybe, but not on a common day soon, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Fair question. Councilwoman Brightwell?
In my travel in the metro area, around different parts of the city, I have noticed service stations with kind of carryout food. And this may be as a planner question, how prevalent is this combination in the city of Southfield, or is this the first one?
I believe there are some others that are here, and it's a growing trend amongst gas station C-stores generally. I've seen it in my career in the last 15 years, it's been a growing trend. It's something that is increasing pretty much everywhere.
Right. I've noticed, but I haven't, I noticed in my travel in the metro area. I've seen it, but I haven't seen it, this is the first, my hearing of this, in or in, I'm assuming if it has happened in the past, it would've came before council for some type of approval.
12 Mile and Evergreen.
12 and Evergreen?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so it is currently an event in Southfield?
Mm-hmm. Yep. One in Southfield, too.
Several.
Okay. Okay, that's extended my question.
All right. Council, any other questions?
I do have one other question.
Sure.
Yeah. When you have the kind of quote-unquote restaurant that you're talking about, the grab-and-go, do you have to get a permit from Oakland County for a food handling permit?
Yes.
He'll have to apply through the building department and all the permits in Oakland County, though, for his restaurant.
Okay, and I'm sure there, you made some arrangements for security, because the person that's behind the glass that takes your money for, for gas, somehow or another, has to go out and, and pick the plastic spoons up off the floor, and, or whatever. So that, that's a concern that I would think that our police department would have, that that makes it pretty risky to be out in the open if somebody comes in, has malice in their heart. So, so how do you, how do you plan to deal with that?
The area back there, it's gonna, has all, it's old cash register. It got nothing to do with the gas station, so there's, will be a different guy standing on the other side.
So there's a wall?
You mean like?
Or a petition or something?
No, 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 won't be. So there's a counter, you're talking about the casual cash, cash register, won't be like a wall in between, like, the customer and the worker.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think there's any other questions, it sounds like. We will see this back in two weeks?
Correct.
And, and it's a public hearing, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a special end-use insight plan, so it will require a public hearing for the special end use.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have a presentation, discussion, and action regarding zoning ordinance text amendment.
Yeah, this is, once again, just for discussion, the vote would be at the public hearing in two weeks. This is a text amendment with three parts, commence three sections, but it also has sort of three topics. There is a clarification about public art being permitted in front yards. The second part, on the back of the presentation you had a while back from McAllister Rental, to allow heavy equipment sales and rental in the I-1 district as a special use. And Article 22, which will increase the permitted lot coverage on single-family residential lots, and has a footnote making it clear that public art is one of the exceptions permitted in front yards, it's a tie bar. I'll go through these in a little more detail. The first one here is Article 4, Section 5.22-5, the public art requirement. We're adding a new section at the end, that just says, "Public art approved per the requirements and procedures of this section," the public art section, "and per site letter of view by the person, commissioner, or council having jurisdiction," which is the standard language of whichever body is having authority on the site plan as the approving body, "shall be permitted and required front setbacks." This came up because the architect who was working on the art installation for the Deer Run condominiums noticed that we didn't have a specific exception listed in the front yard for public art. It's implied, because obviously you put front yard where, or, public art where it can be seen, but it wasn't an explicit exception, and most other things permitted in yards are explicit exceptions. So this was just to clarify that issue, and make sure that that was, the implied permission became an explicit permission.
So, if you can stop there.
Yep.
Council, do you have any questions on this change? I feel maybe easier to take the changes one by one.
Probably, they're a little.
But, and, Council, any questions?
So, this is just being proposed in what districts? I don't, single-family residential?
This is actually for the public art, for the public art requirements, so it would typically be in commercial.
I'm having a hard time.
Sorry, I'll try to get off, this mic's having a little, I don't want to get it popping again, so I have to kind of balance it. Public art is typically required in the multifamily and commercial districts, not in the single-family districts. This is only allowing public art per the public art requirements. It would only apply to those arts required by our, public art required by our ordinance, specifically. We didn't want to, we wanted to open that door enough to cover our own public art requirement, but not over-open it, at this point. Smaller art installations are actually part of the approvable landscaping now, as like hardscape, but I think their max like is three feet, is if I recall correctly.
So we are going to allow this an R2 zoning?
No, it would not be allowed in any of the R1 through RE zoning. It would be commercial and multifamily only.
Okay, 'cause I thought you said yes to R2.
No, it's, it's multifamily and commercial office only. The R1 through R5 and RE would not be permissible. We don't install public art per the public art requirement in those districts, because it would only be part of a larger project. The project has to have a value of at least a million dollars to trigger the art requirement, and it has to be a multifamily or commercial project.
Multi-family.
Single-family homes would never fall under this.
Okay, so the zoning will be identified in the, with the, under the section, 'cause I don't see anything listed here. Council, am I missing something?
The zoning is not changing in the ordinance. They're changing the ordinance, the public art ordinance, which defines the specific zoning areas, which are commercial or residential multifamily.
Yep.
Yeah, no, as long as it.
Not residential, single-family.
As long as it's listed, I don't see it listed in anything, given the council. So that was, I guess, my question.
Yeah, it would only be, this, what change would only come into effect when a project has to have the public art requirement. It really, literally, only if it is required by our public art requirement, does this come into effect. That's why it's in the public art section. So it doesn't affect everyone, it only affects people who are required to have public art per the public art requirement, which is large projects, a million dollars or more, of commercial or multifamily.
Could I clarify?
Yeah.
This does not apply to a homeowner who wants to put a statue in his front yard?
No.
Or her.
There is an exception in the landscape definition in the ordinance already that would allow people to do smaller-scale things on residential property, like fountains and sculpture, up to a certain height. After that, it becomes a structure, and then it would not be exempted. This will only, this amendment literally only affects the public art requirement. Art that we require per the public art requirement will be permitted in front yards. That's all it does.
Okay. And again, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, so I guess hopefully that is listed in the ordinance when it comes before us. Thank you.
You, you okay with that, Tom?
Yeah, it's, if you read the entire public art section, it spells out where public art is required and allowed. We didn't repeat it in this amendment, because we're just adding on an exception for front yards, not changing where public art is typically required and allowed.
So I think, I think Councilwoman Banks would like the whole ordinance presented to council when it comes back to us on the 18th?
The entire, yeah, the, the section is on here, but I can highlight the part that specifies where it's required and allowed.
Okay. Perfect.
I mean, it would be helpful for me, and I can't speak for my colleagues, when we present something like this, if we could've had that section here, so we could see what we're talking about. We're just.
Yeah, I don't have the entire section on the screen, but in the backup, I sent the entire section is in there. It's 5.22-5. So in your backup I provided on this amendment, it's the entire section. You're only adding number six. One through five is in there.
Right, but she, she doesn't want just the section listed, she would like to see the entire ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, it's.
In other words, she wants the context, to see it in context.
Yeah.
The other thing I would add is that the Public Art Commission is already doing this, as far as commercial buildings.
Yeah.
When they, when they hit the ceiling for a major renovation or new construction, all of those, to comply with the public art ordinance, all of those are coming before the Art Commission with a recommendation to the council when, when you do the site plan.
Councilman Brightwell?
Districts?
In essence, this makes sense, but I'm just trying to get the genesis for the, are we just being proactive, or have we had, have we had situations that require this action, or are we just being proactive?
We actually had the architect who was working on this art piece, shown on the slide for Deer Run condominiums, he was looking at the code and realized we didn't have a specific exception for front yards, for locating the public art, and asked if that was gonna be a problem. And we said, no, we've approved it in front yards before, but you're right, we don't have an explicit exemption. So.
Okay.
We probably would've approved it anyway, but it was best to fix the problem. So in a way, we were reacting, but also being proactive. Instead of leaving it as an interpretation, we're making it explicit.
Okay, then, I'm trying to get the genesis for it.
Yeah.
Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, I read the write-up, and I'm a little troubled with the way it's, it's written, that according to what I understand, when I read it, was if somebody spends a million dollars to build a building, that, and they don't finish the three-foot artwork out in front, that they can't get a COO, which doesn't make any sense to me at all, that you're gonna hold up somebody's business for a three-foot statue out in front, because, after they spent a million dollars on a building. That... That, that's one of the things that, that bothers me about the write-up. Another thing is that the art commission and the, uh, planning department has the final say-so, whether or not this is acceptable or not. Both of, the art commission is an appointed committee, and I don't see any other committee that has final say-so on something as important as this. Yeah, they have their projects and stuff, but even that, they have to run by somebody that has the authority to make that decision. And, uh, if it comes to, you know, if it comes to that, if somebody comes to the microphone and starts complaining about, they're gonna complain, complain to us, they're not gonna complain to the art commission. They're gonna be upset with the art commission, but, and if we don't have any say-so in that, uh, that doesn't seem to sit well with me, and I don't know about the rest of the council or not. And I hope I haven't misread the thing, but if I have, I want you to clear it up now so that this whole conversation gets broadcast at the same time.
I can speak to that through the chair.
Pardon me?
I can speak to that. Um, the art commission only makes a recommendation, they did, they review it. They don't, uh, they don't, as you say, they're an appointed commission, they're not elected. So they, uh, it goes to them for review, they give feedback on the piece. Um, and it's, uh, as far as, the, the art requirement is very, very broad. So it could be landscaping, for instance, those condos on, um, Maple Tree, uh, they did benches and trees, and they met their art requirement. Uh, we work with the, uh, individual developers, um, for the, um, uh, Great Lakes Water Authority and those new water tanks at Eight Mile and, and Delaware. Um, they were just plain tanks, so instead they did some decorative, uh, brickwork. It wasn't art, but it, so it's architectural detailing. It's actually about, uh, you know, enhancing, uh, the area. A number of, um, uh, people have a choice, too. They can, they can, depending on the size of the project, they can pay up to 25,000, there's a cap. Or, um, they have great latitude in, uh, how to meet that, that requirement. Or some, I'd just say, I'd rather just give you 25,000 and put it in the, the art fund, which, you know, is paying for the various things that, uh, we don't fundraise for. Uh, another example, though, is, um, that new storage place at 12 and Southfield. Uh, the owner of that, uh, is, said, "I have a vision for what I want this place to look like, and I, I, I know that art has attracted customers to my business." Uh, and so, he, he's going to 220,000 art installation on the top of that building. 220,000. Uh, we did not ask for that, this is what he wants. He, it's the same, um, self-storage, uh, owner that built the place on Eight Mile, next to Gardner White. He put, he bought the piece out of Grand Rapids, the art fair, the Dragon. And he's, and he tells me that when people go down Eight Mile, they miss his, you know, they're going 45, 50 miles an hour or more. And, um, it's brought customers to him, it's also helped people find his business, that huge steel dragon that, that's out, out in front. So, y- you know, um, obviously, I'm all about making, uh, our city more vibrant and having these installations, that's why we passed this ordinance. But again, um, it's very, very liberal, uh, as to how the, um, petitioner decides. Clariance is another one. The corner of Northwestern Highway and Civic Center Drive. They did that little seating area and some landscaping, that was their art requirement. That, that's what they chose. And it, you know, it served their building, uh, it enhances the corner, and it serves us.
Okay, that's, the way you explained it tonight is exactly how I remember when you made the first presentation, that it doesn't have to be a statue. It can be the design of the building, it can be a flower garden out in front, a special flower garden out in front, landscaping. Uh, but when I read this in the thing, it only talked about.
Yeah.
Uh, statues. And when you made the presentation, uh, several years ago, uh, I objected to everybody having a statue. I said, "I'm not interested in walking through a museum."
But, um, uh, again, I think it's worked out for the city. And you, you are one, um, you know, Myron, we've known each other for years and worked together. You're, you're one that has always talked about, uh, how things look.
Absolutely.
Uh, and so this, this is added, uh, to that.
No, I'm glad that it's, it was explained, because it was narrowed down to only the statue and the, and setback and, and all.
So, and I would say to the, uh, the planning department, I think your questions raised Ms., uh, Ms. Banks's question.
Yes.
The, the context was missing here.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Brightwell?
I do have a question.
Oh, okay.
I had a question before about something else, but I just.
Okay, you're, you're good with this so far?
I'm good.
I, I apologize.
That's okay.
All right, any other questions on this, on the public arts change? All right, let's take the next one.
Just one comment on this one before we move on. I did find here in the section, there's the exemptions that this public art requirement does not respond to, and residential projects with less than four units are not part of the public art requirement. So, a single-family home would never qualify as part of the public requirement, 'cause it's less than four units. It's a single unit.
Four D or four?
Four.
Four, okay.
So if you had an RT, attached condo development, it might qualify for this, if it had four or more units. But a single-family R1 through RE would never qualify, 'cause you're only allowed to have one house on that lot. So you would never qualify under the arts requirement as a result of the number of units.
Okay, so, thank you.
Yep. Next up is the addition of heavy equipment sales and rental to the I-1 industrial district. We added this, uh, actually in two spots, because the I-1 district breaks up special land uses by Telegraph and by Eight Mile. We were just gonna add it to Telegraph, but the planning commission was like, "Well, if you're adding it to Telegraph, why aren't you adding it to Eight Mile, it seems even more appropriate in that location?" And after some additional review, they seemed to be correct, so we added it in both places, which is what they recommended approval of. There are a number of site development standards to try to, you know, define the use well enough that it doesn't get away from us, as it is a new use for us. The inquiry for 21700 Telegraph from McAllister Rental, when we reviewed that with Chuck Woodward, the building official, to try to determine where that was allowed, we realized our ordinance had a gap, this use was not actually addressed. There were a few uses that were similar, but none were quite the same. And based on the exclusionary zoning issue in the Michigan zoning and naming law, we needed to figure out a way to address this use. So adopting it as a special land use, where it would have to have site plan approval and special land use approval by the council, with reasonable site development standards, seemed to be the best approach to, you know, not opening the door too far, but opening it enough to address the use and allow for reuse of that property. So there, you know, minimum size, some operational issues, can't displace required parking, can't displace required landscaping, loading, um, some hours of operation issues for when they're operating equipment, indoor servicing of equipment. This is a, just an example of, this is the building on Telegraph and McAllister's proposal for use of it, just to give you an idea of what this operation would look like. And I believe that's, yeah, that's what we have on that one.
Counsel, any questions on this? I did have one question, which, how many properties could potentially fall into this new category? Or even with the special land use, is it all of those along the I-1 Telegraph-Eight Mile area?
Yeah, theoretically, but you have to be at least three acres in size, there's a minimum lot area, that's going to constrain it somewhat, there are some larger properties there that could potentially be used for that. But it's just the I-1, which is that southern part of Telegraph and the parts of Eight Mile that are I-1, not IL, which is the light industrial, and it, it does have that three-acre minimum to make sure someone doesn't try to wedge this use into too small of a site. You know, that's like, I think our, our auto dealerships have to have two acres, because of the storage of vehicles. The three-acre, it fits some of the other similar uses that were in the code, also required three acres. We thought it was a relatively consistent requirement in that area. There, there are certainly a few other properties that could potentially be used for the use, but it's not a use that seems to proliferate, there is a certain amount of competition in this industry, and you have to be at a certain scale to make it work, from what I understand.
Okay. Perfect. All right, we can take the next one.
All right. The next section is Article 22, the Schedule of Regulations. The first part of this, and the primary issue, was raising the maximum lot coverage for single-family residences. This is the RA through the RE, not applying to the multi-family districts at all, from 25 to 30%. This came up, we looked, when, with a request from the building department for consideration, because the zoning board was seeing a fair number of appeals, uh, for improvements to existing homes that were creating lot coverage waivers with the zoning board. And we looked at surrounding communities, typically they were running closer to 30, 35%, or 25% was on the lower end of what is allowed in some of our surrounding communities, and more typically. And raising it to 30% would have eliminated, I think, all but two of the amendments, or the waivers granted by the zoning board over the last several years. And this would allow for our existing homes that are on maybe somewhat smaller lots to have, you know, a larger porch put on them, a family room addition, some investment in modernization in those smaller homes. So that was at the request of the zoning board and the building department, we looked into that. As you can see here, I summarized both the zoning appeals since 2018 and the coverages in neighboring communities. The comparison with neighboring communities is a little tricky sometimes, just because sometimes they have different ways of defining lot coverage, sometimes it's all structures, sometimes it's just the principal structure. So I had to kind of do a little bit of analysis on that. But they all do tend toward the 35% number as more the average. And just to kind of give a, an illustration, the left would be a 70 by 130, roughly 9,000 square foot lot is sort of our minimum-sized lot that's in the code for new lots. And you can see on the left, at 25%, you get 2250, that's a single story, if you had a two-story house, it'd be double that. And then on a 30%, you go up to 2700 as the maximum. It's the same lot width, same house width, it's just a bit deeper. And the other part of this amendment is a footnote to the table, just once again referencing the public art approved per the requirements and procedures of Section 5.22-5, which is the public arts section, and site plan review for the site plan review requirements, shall be permitted in required front setbacks. We added it here in addition to the public art section, to make sure that whether you were looking at the Schedule of Regulations or you were looking at the public art section, that exception would be explicit. It was kind of just tie barring them to point to each other. So this points back to 5.22-5, which is the public arts requirement.
But it's still not affect single-family residential?
Nope, 'cause you have to have at least four units, residential units on a property to make it qualify, and it has to have a million-dollar value. So it has to be both.
All right. Counsel, any questions on the slot coverage? Councilman Banks?
I'm going back to the public art, um, and single-family residential. There was a family off of Berg Road that, I believe he was an artist, and he would make his sculptures in the front yard, and for a while, they would stay there. I mean, if you are building or making a sculpture, is that allowed, or is that addressed in our ordinance? He may have moved, 'cause I haven't seen it in a while, but there were years.
That would be a non-permissible home occupation. Like, oh my, like, we don't allow home occupations of that sort, and do especially.
In the front yard, but something in the rear.
Even if they did in their garage, technically, it wouldn't be a permitted home occupation the way I understand our home occupation definition, 'cause it's more of a machine shop kind of situation. So, yeah, no, that, that would violate the current code and the code after this amendment.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I, I did have one question, if, if we're looking at the, I appreciate the, the lot coverage, you know, the percentage. It would have been nice to see what the actual, you know, footage, lot coverage footage would, would have been. But my question is, we're proposing to go up to 30%, but based on other communities surrounding Southfield, most of them are at 35. Why would we not go up to 35?
Couple of things, I mean, this is kind of what the zoning board and building department were asking for. The other thing is, our lot coverage limit actually only applies to the house, it does not apply to the accessory structures. So it's just the principal structure. It says, well, it says buildings, so it would apply to the home, the garage, or a shed, it only applies to buildings. Um, so, that limit would only apply to buildings, where in some communities, that 35% is all structures, including pools, decks, porches, gazebos, it includes everything. So, at 30% for the buildings, we're probably pretty close to alignment for the people who are 35% for all structures. And it did solve most of the waiver appeals from the zoning board, too. So, we thought, we'd try 30%. I know, um, Director Crowe also, will, will probably want to come back and revisit this if we decide to go forward on any kind of accessory dwelling units ordinance, because to accommodate that, we might have to go a little higher, yeah.
Okay, and then, the only other question, which you probably do not know the answer to, let's put it out there. Do you know why those two cases were not granted what they were requesting?
Uh, let's see, that unfortunately, I do not have the details beyond what you see on the table, I.
Okay, I just, I didn't think you did, but I figured I'd ask.
Yeah, the, the folks who handle the zoning board, I just asked them, "Can you give me a summary of all your appeals for the last five, six years?" Because with the pandemic, I didn't want to just count on the last two, 'cause who knows, that could have been odd.
Right, no, I get it. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would urge the council to approve this, as, uh, we have a number, many older homes, some with only one-car garage. And this gives, uh, more flexibility. Certainly, you see in our surrounding, uh, communities, um, I'm thinking particularly of Berkeley, where, um, modest homes have been redone, renewing a neighborhood. And, uh, many times, um, the, the replacement home is larger than, than the original. I think this is, um, uh, an important step for the city to take in, um, helping, uh, individual homeowners, uh, reinvest in their property, whether it's adding a, a sunroom, or, uh, a larger garage, or, or whatever. Uh, it's about renewal. And our, um, you know, we have aging housing stock, so. I'd urge, uh, when this comes before you for a vote to approve it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for it, and I'm, I'm looking at these addresses, and it looks like also most of them were adding a second story. So I guess they potentially needed to go out a little bit, as well as go up. But, I think it would definitely help the, the zoning board, uh, make, you know, make their life a little bit easier. All right, counsel, any other questions about these?
I, I just have a question that probably, probably will never happen, but that's the way my mind works sometimes. You're talking about, in addition to the home, but not to the outbuildings.
Hmm.
If the, uh, owner puts a, let's say, a, a back porch on his, on his house, that's crowding the total maximum square footage that's allowable? But then he decides to put a tiny house out there, will that not be approved?
If the total of the buildings would exceed 30%, then under the revised ordinance, it would not be. They'd have to seek another waiver, we'd have to increase the limit again, if we wanted to allow that.
But it is possible to go to the zoning board to appeals?
Oh, yeah, well, by state law, everyone has a right to appeal a denial under zoning to the board for a waiver. We can't deny them an appeal. They may not be approved, but we can't deny them the, the right to a process.
Okay.
To follow up on that, one of these that I'm looking at, that got approved by the zoning board, was somebody wanted to add a second floor in their garage. They got approved by the zoning board, and then when they went to file their building permits, the building department said, "We don't allow that in Southfield."
Oh, wow.
That was a whole, that was a whole mess. I said, "How did you get to the zoning board? Like, how did you get approved by, you know, to go to the zoning board?" And they, they scrapped those plans and just built a second floor over their whole house rather than their garage.
I think they've tightened up the process, and some, I, my impression, anyway.
Yeah. So, all right. Thank you very much, and these will be back to us. Thank you very much, and these will be back to us on the.
Eighteenth?
Eighteenth. Perfect. All right. We are up to the council portion of the meeting, and we'll start with Councilwoman Hoag.
I have nothing, thank you.
All right. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I have a couple of veteran items. The Oakland Community Health Network is offering a veteran community resource fair on September the 18th of this year between 9:00 AM and 12:00 PM at the Madison Heights City Hall. And that's located at 300 West 13 Mile. And these are, these are items which will be covered there would be veterans navigator program. We will have a session on the veterans health, I mean, benefits, which goes from health, education, and numerous other things, and including suicide prevention. Food packages will be prevented, I mean, will, will, will also be provided. And we are definitely pushing these days for the mental health of all veterans. And we know that veterans are exposed to things that most of us in society are not exposed to. And all of us are individuals and we process things differently. So if you know of someone or a family member, and when I make these messages, they're intended to be passed on if they do not directly affect you, please, please pass, pass on the message to your neighbor, a child, or anyone that might be in need. And this is, you know, it's, it, it means a lot to me for veterans because I, I knew a lot of veterans and, and they are individuals and people just like the rest of us. And also, in addition, and if you, if you need additional info on this, obviously contact me at, at City Hall, or you can contact the Oakland Community Health Network at 248-858-1210. And another veteran item deal with the paralyzed veterans of America. That's the PVA of America. These are individuals who have been exposed to the traumas of defending America and defending our real life. And, and it cost them, but they are here today. And the VA, in addition to the service organization, Paralyzed Veterans of America, they provide benefits to the paralyzed veterans. They offer job counseling and training. And also, they also get into suicide prevention. To learn more about this, and also if you know a veteran that needs this particular health, please address them to go to www-pva, that's PapaVictorAlpha.org, or call for free That's 1-866-734-0857. And that's for the paralyzed veterans of America. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Taylor?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. We have a lot of activity going on this week in the city of Southfield, starting with, or actually next week, I should say. Again, September 10th, the Southfield Public Library, we will be celebrating our 20th anniversary of the library. It's so hard to believe, 20 years ago, we broke ground there. The event is from 1:00 to 4:30 here, 26,000 Evergreen Road. The event is free and it is open to the public. Also, the Eat to the Beat concert series will be held on Thursday, September 14th here at City Hall. It will be during lunchtime. I believe it's 11 to, 2 o'clock PM. And as was commented earlier, under the public portion of the agenda, a suicide prevention forum will be held in the city of Farmington Hills that will be held on September 14th in the evening. It will be, the address is 29995 West 12 Mile, and that is at the Hawk Community Center. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Frazier?
The only thing I have is, I would like the council to reconsider re-establishing the site plan committee. I know it was, was dropped, but I think that's an important thing. Doesn't have to meet all the time. It's only on a rare occasion when it needs to meet, but I think it's important that the council has a final say. And that's not the way it's been presented to us.
Okay. And we can have a discussion when Planner Crowe gets back, because one of the, one of the reasons we were trying to do that is, I believe the redevelopment ready, as well as the MEDC, wanted us to try to do things a little bit faster. And part of what they felt was, by having the council site plan, by having a lot of planning commission meetings, by having, then it come to council, and it just took too long for developers. And there was, I think, some funding or some type of certification that we were, were at risk of losing. But we can ask Planner Crowe for an update, and I think having a discussion with him about that could.
Yeah. One of the presented to us, it was that the planning commission had a final say on the.
That, that was one of the things we were discussing, to try to move things quicker.
Yeah. And the argument was that if the developer had to bring the attorney or the architect back, it's costing extra money, it spreads time out. But I don't think there's that many times when there's a controversy. But I still say that I don't think we want to abdicate our responsibility to a appointed committee rather than the elected committee. So, that's it. Yeah, it's something to think about. We don't need to debate it tonight or anything.
Yeah, we'll bring it up to Planner Crowe and, and see if he wants to make a presentation to council and the pros and cons.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
No.
All right.
That's, that's it for me.
I just wanted to let everyone know this weekend, I know I received the Parks and Rec brochure for the fall and winter. A lot of great classes in there. I know personally, I'm excited that the ice rink will hopefully be open. I think this week it's opening. So that's exciting. There are a number of positions. I know in the ice rink, they are looking for some positions. If you want to drive a Zamboni, it's always been a dream of mine, but I don't know why. But, you know, if you are looking for a, a, you know, part-time job, working on the ice, it is definitely a worthwhile endeavor to, to look at. I did have a question for the, for the council subcommittee, the legislative committee. I know that one of the things we were talking about was naming rights in the city. Do we have that? Do we know how that's coming along?
It's still being reviewed, still being.
Okay. Because I did, over the weekend, I did receive a, a request for someone to either rename a street in the city or even an honorary naming similar to how we have Civic Center Drive as MLK Drive. And I told them, right now, there's a moratorium, we're working on details, but I just, I figured I would ask for a, an update if there was one.
Okay. We do not currently have an update. We are looking at it and reviewing some verbiage and language around that. And not only have, are looking at buildings, but encompassing the whole thing for the city, like streets, as you said, but different organizations as well, because we feel, once we open that up, we start getting requests from everywhere and everybody. So we're trying to do a complete research and then bring something back.
Okay.
So.
Perfect. And then the other thing, just for, for council to think about, this is just an idea, but it was the, I had a conversation with the roadmasters, and being that we just had the Woodward Dream Cruise, they would like to do something in Southfield, some type of mini Southfield Dream Cruise, that they would like to work with the city on. Obviously, there's a lot of details that would go into that, but I just wanted to bring it to council's attention. This is something they would like to, to do, you know, start small, maybe something next year, and then, you know, build it up. You know, other cities also do smaller versions of their Dream Cruise, and they thought that Southfield would be a good, a good candidate. You know, the question is what streets, when, which weekend, or which days around the bigger Dream Cruise. And so just something to think about. I don't know if that would be a, a neighborhood services, or that would just be something that we would have to talk about at another, another time, but just something to think about that that's what, that they approached me with the idea and they would like us to consider doing something. With that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Just very quickly, last meeting, I mentioned to you that on the 18th, I'll be bringing forward a joint resolution celebrating the International Day of Peace in Southfield. And the committee now has worked out, and I will send you an email on this, the program will take place at 5:00 PM on the 21st, out front, weather permitting, in front of the peace poles. It's in cooperation with the Martin Luther King Task Force and our police department, and I believe, believe the band will be there. At any rate, you'll get more information on it, and the joint resolution will be on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. City administration?
I have no items this evening, thank you.
All right. Madam Attorney?
Maybe we may have nothing for the day either, thank you.
All right. Madam City Clerk?
Nothing, y'all. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from our planning department? All right. We have nothing else. Anything else to come before the council?
Nope.
This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.[1782.21][1782.21][music]